7:00 PM. Our first order of business is to approve the minutes of the Utilities Commission meeting of April 18th, 2016.
I would move that we approve the Utilities Commission meetings for April 18th, 2016, as submitted.
Second?
All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, we unanimously approve the minutes. Our operating funds on hand for the Utilities Commission, the total cash on hand is $1,019,145.62. In our capital funds for water and sewer hookup, we have $505,000 for a total of The next order of business is the payment of the bills.
We've to pay the bills for the Utilities Commission.
Sir's second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We unanimously agree to pay the bills. That brings us to Mr. Sykes' report.
Mayor, Council. Couple things. The big pain over here on Spring and High, the leak is fixed. The old valve is out. It turns out that the lead joint didn't go bad, the pipe corroded in the lead joint. So when we cut that out, we cut the pipe, the valve almost fell off. So that's fixed. We have the insert valve. It is a valve that they actually cut into the main and they use the pipe as part of the valve. Then the stem goes into the valve and shuts off the water and it works really well.
That's what they were doing there today?
What we were doing today was cutting out the old valve and putting in a spool piece with two couplings and putting it back online. We did get a couple complaints because we had to shut the water off. The water was only off for about an hour. So to cut out a six-inch valve and get those spool pieces and couplings in, the guys did really good to get that done in an hour. They got it done faster than an hour. The water was off for an hour. So then we started cutting and the guys did really good. I'm proud of what they did today. The valves came in for Radcliffe Pump Station. We are still waiting for the spacers. There are filler pieces that have to go into the pipe to make up gaps because of the different sizes of the valves that are going in compared to the ones that are coming out. Once we get those spacers in, I can schedule the vacuum truck, the standby pumps to come in and we can start cutting out the old stuff and putting new stuff in. I only update to the hospital. Got an email, they plan on doing the soil borings beginning this Wednesday. The soil borings are for the additional monitoring wells that MBE is requiring them to put in at the site.
And they're all above brown, right?
They are all above brown and all but one of them is either directly next to or within 10 feet of an existing monitoring well. And that's all I have.
Wow.
I have a question.
Question was?
So the corner of North Canton Philosopher's Terrace where there was, right there by Mary Wood's house?
Yes.
There was some utilities worked on months ago and it hasn't been paved and it's opening up a pothole in the fill that was put in there. It's compacted and getting a bit rough there.
Okay. What we can do is we can take off some of the crusher run and put some cold patch in.
I need something more there because it's making a pretty big hole.
I was hoping that he was going to get in there and do the black topping last week, but he has not. So on that one in particular and the one over here at High and Spring, we're going to have to put something in there until he can get in here to do the black topping.
We talked about something that cost us about $50,000, we take it out of our capital, but I see the capital is still at half million, so you haven't used that money?
Well, we just got the valves in and-
You haven't paid for them?
The invoice hasn't posted. The invoice for the valves is around $13,000 and I coded that as capital, so it should be showing up probably on the next report.
Oh, on the next report.
Right. And the other items that will be on that capital list will be the cost of the bypass pumps, the vacuum truck to clean out the wet well, and the mechanics to help us do the plumbing inside the pump station. Rather than contract that out, what we did is we're going to contract a mechanic to be on-site to assist us with the repairs, which is a lot cheaper than having a company come in and do the whole thing. It doesn't hurt to have the mechanic there.
I just thought maybe you got it for nothing or something.
No, I would love that, but no.
Okay.
I don't have any.
Okay, let's-
Are you going to stay for the executive?
I didn't know there was one.
There's one on the agenda. No, not for now.
If you want me to stay, I can stay. Not a won't.
Well, let's close the Utilities Commission.
I have a question.
Okay.
Mr. Sykes, have you had a chance to review the agreement between the hospital and the town this draft and render an opinion on whether you think it's good for the town?
I can't speak to what my opinion of it is. There is one in the works. I went over it today with the attorney, but cannot comment on the contents of it.
Okay, we're going to-
Close the meeting.
Okay. Sir's second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Utilities Commission meeting is closed. We'll officially open the Mayor and Council meeting, 7:37 PM. Our first order of business is to approve the minutes of the Mayor and Council meeting of May 2nd, 2016.
I would move to approve the Mayor and Council meetings of May 2nd, as submitted.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, we're sorry.
I have.
Can I say this for me?
Here you go.
Okay, our operating funds on hand, total operating cash on hand for unrestricted use is $1,171,270.70. Under the Washington College donation, assigned funds are $180,480 for a total fund balance Our next order of business is the payment of the bills. Is there a motion to pay the bills?
No.
Is there? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that brings us to Sabine Harvey from the Chestertown Tea Party Festival Committee.
Good evening. How is everyone?
Good.
Excellent. So yes, down to the wire. How many days do we have left? About 10 or so. So we are gearing up. This is actually officially the 40th annual consecutive Tea Party Festival because the Tea Party Festival has been held since 1967, but it was kind of held alternately and since 1976 it hasn't been held every year, so this is the 40th. And we're very pleased we got two grants. One we got from Stories of the Chesapeake and another one from the Kent County Arts Council, so that helps us tremendously because we need to raise all our funds ourselves in case people don't know that. And obviously we have great, great, great expenses just in entertainment for the weekend. We spent about $14,000. So and then there's insurance and court of party, security, so you know, it's a big festival. I'm not here by myself because I have some committee members, first and foremost. Linda, one of your council members, and Joe Holt. I have to say they have done an excellent, excellent, fabulous job. I think we have more artisans than we've had in the past, I don't know how many years. So we're officially done taking artisans because we've squeezed in just about everything, everybody we can. The streets have been marked, so now it's just getting all those logistics down. But I cannot thank them enough because they are just sort of professionals and they have done it fantastically well. And so there's some other people here. Mary Simmons is here. She helps with the parade and then entertainment and just about anything else. And Jamie Williams has joined us as well, and she's going to be helping with the artisans and her. So thanks to some generous people downtown. We now finally have some reserved parking spaces for the artisans because of course they pay nice money to be here and then we were like, well, now you're set up, so go skedaddle and find yourself a parking spot. So hopefully we have the, Linda started that last year and hopefully that will continue. I guess the big, and I have to thank Jamie Yorkis because he is just such a tremendous sponsor and of course Washington College as well because we're, you know, we're using the custom house and we're using all kinds of resources from Washington College. The big change for this year will be that we're moving the street party. So the street party was held in front of the Garfield, but we realized that obviously that already starts creating some, you know, traffic control issues for the people who live downtown. So we have moved the street party to the very foot of High Street, to the parking lot, so that we won't be bothering the downtown, both the shop owners as well as the people who live there because we already shut down the whole darn thing on Saturday. So hopefully that will alleviate some of the hassle that we create. And the food is not necessarily catered, but we've actually asked our local food trucks to come and supply the food as well as Eliza Getz from the high school, Matt April's Farm, they're going to be providing some salads and stuff like that, so it should be a good party. We're still doing the entertainment and the music and nothing of that changes, just, you know, we're trying to tie in our local community as well as making it a little bit easier for everybody to navigate. We had wanted to resurrect the Sonne Lumiere that had been done for many, many years and it took us months to actually find all the pieces, both, you know, the slides, the music, and the narrative, but when we really started looking at it, it just was a little bit too outdated and no longer 21st century worthy. So we're going to try to do something, but not this year. It's just, you know, went above our technical expertise to try to revive that. And then for Saturday, we have more demonstrators that we really tried to increase the education that is around the colonial, colonial part of the festival. So we have the colonial village around the courthouse. There will be a lot of demonstrators there, you know, people who will show how food was prepared, medicine, you know, all that kind of stuff. There will be a bunch of regiments there and it will be a lot of fun for both adults as well as for kids. There will be a lot of kids' activities with a separate schedule and so that will all be taking place around the courthouse, kind of gives this nice colonial feel. And obviously we have our food vendors. Most of them have come back. We have some new food vendors, so we're very excited about that. I do have to mention, special mention, that the Chester River Corral will be performing and they are going to do their, you know, their patriotic songs, but most importantly, very excitingly, they managed to get paid to sing two songs that are currently part of the Hamilton musical. So that will be very exciting and totally out of their comfort zone because that's not the type of music Chester River Corral usually sings, but they're very excited about it. And then on Sunday, we'll have our beer and wine festival tasting as well as of course the raff race. And to give it a little bit more of a colonial feel, where actually we have some more vineyards who are participating, but most importantly, we will also be serving cider, so to just-
Nice. Good touch.
Get that history back on there. And I think, oh, now, I talk a mile a minute, right? So I did the same thing. WBAL TV actually came in last Thursday and interviewed me in Fountain Park, so we'll see. They were going to do a whole thing about what to do on the eastern shore for Memorial Day weekend, so this should air on the Friday before Memorial Day.
Wow.
And they came with cameras and they wandered around and so hopefully we'll, you know, Chester Town will feature on Channel 11. And then WCTR is also going to do a live broadcast during the Tea Party Festival itself, so that should be a lot of fun. Mary, you have anything to add?
No. Thank you. Jamie? Nope. Sabine, Katie's here. Thank Dixon very much for the parking space.
Yes. Any questions?
And we have a lecture series on Saturday-
Yes.
-through the Historical Society.
Yes, they have very generously done some amazing lectures, so arranged for that, so hopefully we'll be able to attend those as well. Obviously you can find all the information on our webpage, chestertownteparty.org, as well as on our Facebook page. Oh, no, I know. Ooh, almost forgot, volunteers, yes. Yeah. So we have worked really hard this whole year, right? But that doesn't mean that all the tents and equipment are just going to go up magically. So if anyone is an early riser, we sure could use your help Saturday morning, starting at about-
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock, yes.
6:00 AM.
Wow.
We will get about five, six hours of sleep that night after we're done cleaning up from the street party. And then of course at the end of the day, when we've been there for about 12 hours, we could definitely use some help cleaning up again. And if you really want to have some fun, we could use some people helping with the beer tasting part of the festival. That's a lot of fun. It's two-hour shifts and you get to pour little tastings of beer and make people very happy.
Hopefully not too happy.
No, we're trying to, to keep it all kosher. But yes, if people would like to volunteer just an hour and I'm telling you, just somebody who could put up a tent or, you know, take down a tent or drive something to storage, put up some signs, it would be very much appreciated.
Well, thank you guys so much for all you do to make this happen. This is a huge event, not just for the town, but the whole county.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Sabine. Okay, we're actually, we have a change to the agenda. We're going to have Chief Baker give his report. We had hoped to, this will hopefully be the last month where we have both the Utilities Commission and the Police report on the same night because we're going to try to shift them so that we only have one, one at each meeting.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and I apologize if I've thrown your schedule out of whack, but it is necessary for me to give the second one because my data doesn't come in until sometimes the second or third, so I wouldn't have it if I were the first Monday. So I appreciate your modified schedule, but presenting the report from April 2016. And our administrative hours were 10, which was 1% of our time. Criminal investigations were 53 hours, giving 4% of our time. Accident investigations were eight hours, that was 1%. Our vehicle patrol was 794 hours, that was 61%. Our foot patrol was 125, that was 10% of our time. Our training was 95 hours, that was 10%. Our court was 22 at 2%, and our overtime was 81 at 6%. We had seven adult arrests, made 15 charges. They were four assaults, two each for deadly dangerous weapon, forgery, theft, and false documents. And we had one each for disturbing the peace, failure to obey FTA. We had zero juvenile arrests. We had two Part I offenses, both were cleared by arrest. We had seven Part II offenses, five were cleared by arrest, two were unfounded. We wrote 59 murder vehicle citations. We wrote 312 murder vehicle warnings and we had 398 red speed violations, which is like right on for our kind of 400. Our most demanding day of the week was Friday. Our busiest, our highest demand for time was between three and four. And I think I skipped over your ward percentages, which are usually pretty consistent. Ward one was 3%, ward two was 28, ward three was 34, and ward four was 26. 7% was outside. And unless there are any questions, I did want to make one comment.
I think people may wonder why each month you come in with so many hours of training, but much of that is mandatory training. It's not just any people offer.
The majority, yes sir, is mandatory training and we actually do probably kind of, we try and spread it out through the year, but it is probably concentrated more like in February, March, April, when, you know, we're not quite as busy.
I'm not sure if people realize that you have to have recertification from time to time.
Oh, absolutely, yes sir. And then this year too, there are some courses that we have to have every three years and we're in that three-year cycle also, so they can learn. So anyway, my comment I just wanted to make sort of as a public awareness, and that is that in the past three weeks, we have had three fatalities regarding drug overdose, one a week. And in the scope of the world, that's not a very, very high number, but for Chestertown, you know, one is, one is too many for me. Our condolences goes to the families that in a small community like this, we don't have to look very far and we can very quickly see a relative or someone that's affected. But my point in mentioning is that, and two of those are certainly heroin, the third is probably, this is a very serious problem and sometimes one and you're done. So if anyone is aware of any problems, you know, we want to help get them help, but it's a serious issue and we're going to tackle it head on.
There was a thing on TV tonight where in Ohio, it's overtaken death on the highway by teenagers by overdoses or opiates of some type.
All right, thank you for your attention. I'm sorry.
I want to apologize to you, and I should have said this at the last meeting, thank you for four years of our chief of the Chestertown Police Department. You saw that you had your anniversary on May 1st.
My honor, my pleasure.
Just to reiterate, if we, if we do, I'm just going back to logistics, if we want to stagger the Utilities and the Police report so they're not at the same meeting-
Yes, sir.
You basically are saying you need to be at the second meeting of the month.
Yes, sir. And again, so theoretically, the first Monday of the month could be June 1st.
I see.
And so I have a need about-
You don't have anything to tell us?
Three or four days to get that data.
Okay, got it.
Yes.
So I noticed in the first and second ward, a couple of the old addresses for the traditional student houses popping up again.
Yes, ma'am.
I guess it's the fair weather, finer weather, you know-
Right.
Parties are moving outside, windows are open, so is the college working on that?
They are. We all-
Graduation's next weekend?
We are collectively working on it. I tell you, in the last two weeks, we haven't had any incidents.
Good.
And so we got to kind of get through about two more weeks and actually really one we're good. But yes, ma'am, we are working on that.
And I want to thank you.
One last comment, you made the magic point of 10% flipping.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I want to thank you too because we have two Chestertown Police Officers who have volunteered all year and for many years on the Tea Party Festival Committee.
I thank you, I'll never get it.
All right, thanks, Chief. Next up is the Town Manager's Report. Bill Ingersoll.
First thing I want to do is introduce the budget for 2017. The public hearing on the budget will be June 6th, D-Day. The budget this year is still set at .37 cents per hundred. No change to that or revenues, including grants are $4,492,029. Expenses are $4,605,641. We intend to sell $350,000 worth of assets that have been declared surplus, which will give us an excess of revenues over other financing source of expenditures at 2/36/388. The Utilities Commission, no rate increases for this year. The revenue should be $1,894,600 versus total expenses of $1,808,689. As I said, there'll be a public hearing on that, June 6th, 7:00 PM. Copies of this are available either virtually or in paper. Second thing I have is 2016 Chestertown Annexation Resolution Number One. We have Kate Gray and Kevin Sharon here. Kate is representing KRM. Kevin Sharon representing TSM, the engineers. You each have a packet with that and the packets are available for the press. This is 79 acres. I'll just read the, a little bit of the public notice of the, there'll be a public hearing on this on July 5th. And if the annexation area contains 79.67 acres of land vacant to the northeast of Chestertown, the property is generally bounded on the south by Sheiler Road, on the west by Hack Drive Extended, Washington Square Shopping Center, the lands of Charles Summers, Pizza Hut, Chestertown Investments, formerly the Happy Harrys, and Maryland Route 213, on the north by the lands of Trinity Lutheran Church and Delmarva Power and Light, and on the east by the lands of the Maryland Department of Health and Mental Hygiene. When annexed, the property will become part of the fourth ward. It will have two zoning categories, one which would be professional office to the south and the north will be a hybrid of LI2, allowing some commercial that we anticipate being added by the Planning Commission in the coming process. Kate, would you like to say anything? We have, we have to advertise this for four straight weeks before we could even have a hearing. State planning has to be notified, the county has to be notified. We've done this a lot, but the process is slightly different than it was before. You got the floor, Kate.
Thank you. And Kevin's going to help me out a little too. This is what you might find interesting, the overall concept plan for what we would eventually like to do. The project was initially an expansion for Dixon with a warehouse, but we've grown our concept and our hopes and plans for this site. To give you your bearings, this is 213, this is Sheiler Road. There would eventually be an entrance off of 213 as well as at the intersection on Sheiler Road here. There's possibility of apartments at this end and then this would be a business campus. So it would be both buildings for Dixon as well as KRM to build at least speculative space in the hopes that businesses could either expand in the area or locate to the area. A combination of flex, commercial, office buildings in addition to the, this is the Dixon Distribution Center Warehouse.
Is there any thought of moving the paint colors there?
Potentially. That's not the front burner item, but yes, maybe it would be a, you know, more of a Dixon campus if we were able to.
How about the present warehouse?
It would be partially unoccupied and we would lease it out, but another division of Dixon would move into a high percentage, about 60 or 70% of that building.
Talbot Boulevard?
Talbot Boulevard would remain as it is. He's referring to in the Chestertown Business Park off of Dixon Drive?
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Because I just was reading the Planning Commission minutes where you all got approval for an expansion of the building on Talbot Boulevard.
Right. And that, that's another division of Dixon's and they will remain there, yes.
So is there a potential for new jobs or is this just relocating jobs?
Right now, for Dixon, it's just relocating. Now with an expansion, the hope is that there will be some new jobs, but this, this is also going to be a high-tech automated warehouse. So with automation doesn't come a huge growth in new jobs as it, as it would with the ratio to the number of square feet you're building. However, the, the growth of the business will hopefully dictate that there would be new jobs. Aside from that, the additional buildings that would be built would bring new jobs.
Great.
It's exciting, we're excited about it.
As a business, you have a lot of experience in this, so, and we're awfully happy to talk about the retained jobs too, the commitment that you've had to the community.
Well, we want to thank Bill Ingersoll for his work on this too, putting the resolution together and also we appreciate all, all the work there.
Very helpful.
Couple of things, as part of the annexation, we are doing a traffic impact study. Ultimately, we'll be tying into RAP 213 and so we knew the state and the town wanted to see what the impact of the traffic here is going to be on the roads. And we've also met with Bob Sykes, who are doing a sewer study for the gravity sewer that goes down through town, so that'll all be part of the annexation. We're also on the docket for Wednesday for the Planning Commission to introduce this master plan that UDA out of Pittsburgh has put together for KRM. And just go through the overall plan with the idea that as the annexation goes through, we would probably couple that with a site plan process for, for this building, which would be the- which would be the, the first phase of the project. Any questions?
This is, uh, I think, one of the most exciting developments that we have on the table right now for the town from an economic development standpoint. It also will, I think, strengthen that sort of northern, northern commercial slash industrial end of the community, and it's the perfect place for this type of development, so.
And I think it's very wonderful since it's in the fourth ward.
All right, thank you, guys. Good luck with the Planning Commission process.
Case DeMoy asked me to bring this up today. I guess on Friday, the 13th, we opened the Kent County Middle School paving bids. I believe that the bids were for the track. Anything else?
You know, I did, I actually didn't read.
All, all the paving that's involved with the middle school campus project, there were five, there were four bids. Danny McHenry Backhoe and Paving, $68,200. David A Bramble, Inc., $65,000. Coppage and Cullen LLC, $46,500, and Gateway Construction, Sutherland Hill, $79,000. Mayor Horace, um, excuse me, Mayor Serino stated that the.
All right.
I don't know where that came from.
I'm going way back.
It's not even, it's not even written here. Said that the apparent low bidder was Coppage and Cullen of Centerville, Maryland, and, but Mr. DeMoy would check on all the bids for accuracy before sending a recommendation to Mayor Council. Case tells me that Coppage and Cullen is fine as a low bidder, and this project is moving. He's got bids on other things, and this is going to happen on the timetable. We hope that it's going to happen, so by the time school opens in the fall, a lot of this stuff will be in place, maybe all.
That would be fantastic.
Mr. Coppage, as you know, has done a lot of work around town, patching large stretches of street. Recently, North Queen Street did a nice job on that. He's not as big a contractor as, as some of the others, but he's definitely the same size as a couple of them, so.
You said it will be finished by the fall?
No, I think it will.
We hope that it will.
We're saying that this, this fast-tracking is, is going to be helpful. So when school lets out, we'll be doing a lot of things so that when they come back, it'll be ready.
So is it also the basketball and tennis courts?
The tennis court is a separate contract. They've actually already started repairing it.
So that was.
So do we need a formal endorsement?
Yeah, I need a resolution to go ahead with the low bidder.
You mean a motion?
A motion.
A motion.
Okay, there's a motion to go with Coppage. What's it, Coppage and Cullen? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Any opposed? With the record show, we unanimously approve the low bidder. Coppage and Cullen.
And I have a request for an executive session.
What about this annexation?
Uh, annexation number two, it didn't make it.
Didn't make it.
And I'll tell you why. It's, it's not the same. We, we hope to introduce a, a resolution tonight to annex the Gateway Park and Lagoons, but basically by being separate and not being contiguous, it caused me some problems that I, I'd never done one like that before. I have to make sure that we do it correctly, because you described this property, and then you described that property, but the, the space in between. I think we can just do it A and B, or one and two, but I really don't want to create any confusion, so sort of back to the drawing board on that one. I think that once you do these a couple of times, though, it gets, you know, pretty, it's a lot easier. And especially these, which would be unopposed, because there's no one living there, and we are the property owners. It'll make, certainly make things easier in the long run, but the fact that they're, like, two ears on a mule, you know, it's just a little bit hard to say that this area is this. It's the meets and bounds that's tough.
Okay.
All right?
What time is the hearing on July 5th?
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock.
It's the date of our regular meeting, so it's just a half hour before our normal meeting.
Now, Jen, do you have a form?
I do. I don't know.
We need to meet with council again.
Yeah, I don't know who wants to make. Do you want to make a motion? I want to close under that authority, and what we for the first time.
I hereby make a motion to enter executive session after the mayor and council meeting this evening to consult with council to obtain legal advice on a legal matter. Do I need to say all of this? General provisions, Article 3. Statutory authority to close session, general provisions, Article 3-305B, and Number 7, to consult with council to obtain legal advice on a legal matter.
Second motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll just add it to our workload for tonight. Thanks, Bill. Okay, the mayor's report, I'll be very brief. Basically, all I'm going to be doing is reappointing two members of our Planning Commission who have served admirably. I contacted both of them today. They both agreed to serve another term. I can't tell you how important this is. This is, Planning Commission does a lot of really important things. A lot of people, you know, want to recognize the council when there's a ribbon cutting, but a lot of times, the Planning Commission did a lot of the dirty work in terms of the design and the landscaping and the layout of really every project that comes to fruition in this town, so I'm really pleased that these members, who have been very strong, have agreed to reappoint.
Well, it's nice to have the continuation.
It is. Very nice.
To have all new people come in.
So the first Planning Commission member whose term expired and has agreed to be reappointed is Jane Richmond, so I just, I guess, need a motion.
I'd move to reappoint Jane Richmond.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and then the second member is Robert, or Bob 40. Is there a motion to reappoint?
Move to reappoint Robert 40 to the Planning Commission.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's it for my report. Let's get award reports on. We start with you, Marty.
All right. I don't know whether you call this an award or not, but. May the 6th, we had our branding party. Well attended, everybody on the council, including the mayor, was there, who performed. I'll not, I'll not comment on his performance, but, you know, I.
So.
He did a wonderful job. But it was well attended, it was very crowded, and even though we had rain and we couldn't have it in the park, in the park where it was planned, it went well. And on Saturday, May the 7th, we had the ribbon cutting at the Gateway Park. I'll let Sam comment on that, although the mayor was there, you can comment about his basketball performance.
Oh, yeah.
He's safe, better plays basketball, that's what I thought.
Aw, man.
And on Monday.
Fifty years old, man.
On Monday, May the 9th, I attended the William Donald Schaefer Award, which is presented by the Comptroller's. He does it, goes around it. It's the same one that Mayor Bailey won three years ago. Linda was there also, and we were both representing the talent that, and it was well received for Clayton Mitchell. They actually got it into Clayton Mitchell Building, which is what the county building is, so. It was, it was a, a nice ceremony that lasted about an hour, a lot of, a lot of nice things said about Clayton Mitchell. And again, Ward 4 is doing well, we're about to grow about half again, as big as we are, so. And there's nothing, nothing better for the town than to get some commercial property in here, because it brings jobs, and they pay taxes. And Sam, you can comment on the mayor's basketball performance.
Well, I think the mayor did just fine.
For an old guy.
Certainly, certainly better.
I'm still limping.
Actually, I left before. I saw him warming up, that's it.
Oh, my God. Well, you know what, Chris, your performance is certainly better than mine on.
I know.
So I'll give you that. But, yes, we were all at the Gateway Park grand opening last weekend. I mean, it really came together nicely. It's just, it's really impressive to see just a gravel lot turn into something so beautiful, and something that was so needed by the community, too. You know, you'd be hard-pressed to drive past that court without seeing people utilizing it, and kids playing basketball, so it's a great addition to Ward 3, and a great addition to Chestertown as well. But recruitment for the, the wireless task force is going well. It's, it's pretty interesting how many people have reached out to me and kind of commented on the overall need of, of the connectivity downtown. In fact, I even received a, a call from someone in DC who's contemplating relocating and retiring here in Chestertown, and, you know, they saw this story in the spy, and they just had to, to find out more information, so apparently this story is, is really circulating around the globe, it seems like, so. But I'll keep you all posted. I've been having a few preliminary conversations, and I think we'll definitely be able to get something situated. My goal and objective is to move as fast as possible, and I think we can definitely deliver that, so I will definitely keep you all updated. And then, if you could just send me the email address again for Kerry.
Okay.
It bounced, so there must be something.
All right. Well, I'll check it for her soon.
Perfect. And that's it for Ward 3.
Okay, Linda.
Okay, I got an email from Sumner Hall and the event. Sumner Hall and CB Star Center is to host a Smithsonian exhibition, and this is being 2017, from March 31st until May 19th, which is, you know, put it on your calendar for next year. And the GARR was one of five sites, Chestertown was one of five sites in the whole state of Maryland that was awarded, or was, was selected to host the way we were, the way we worked. And it's a Smithsonian Institution Museum on Main Street traveling exhibit, so that'll be coming this time.
How long will it be there?
From, it'll be in Chestertown from March 31st to May 19th, 2017. The other cities selected were Cumberland, Westminster, Frederick, and Salisbury, so I think that's quite an, an honor for the GARR. And then the Brown Bag Lecture Series at the Boardly Building will be this Thursday, the 18th, at noon. And the ribbon, ribbon cutting for Create was Friday at 4:00. If you haven't been in the shop, it's very high-end. When I, after I came out, I thought, oh, we've got a little bit of New York here, right here on Cross Street, so if you'd like to visit that. I have another situation that kind of came up from a mini crisis. Back when Mayor Bailey was mayor, we had a lot of businesses come in and voiced their wants and wishes regarding the sign ordinance in Chestertown, and nothing ever came of it. And now we are an arts and entertainment district, and we're going to be an enterprise zone, and I have talked to Laney, likely Leslie Raymond, Chris Habermeyer, Carla Missoney, and I, I forget who else I've talked to. What I personally would like to see, it's my ward mainly, is what they would consider their needs as far as what needs to be in the sign ordinance. They had very, very good suggestions the last time they came and gave their presentations, and I think we need, oh, and I, I talked to Kay, too. Sorry, Kay. I think we need to hear what their wants and wishes are. Now that we are, like I said, an arts and entertainment district, we're going to be an enterprise zone, and just exactly what they think they need to promote our downtown Chestertown area. I don't know when they'll get on this, because I had gone to the DCA a couple of years ago and presented the sign ordinance, everything that we had at the meetings, and nothing came of that, but I, me personally, I think we should listen to the businesses.
So do you want, do you want the suggestions to come from DCA? Are we talking about creating a task force like Sam is doing and having them give us a list of that?
Actually, there wasn't a task force before. It was just the businesses, and those who wanted to participate came and gave their version, their ideas of what they would like, what they would need in, in their shops to...
I remember them coming in.
Nothing happened.
They, most of them wanted a sign for their business, but they didn't want the other businesses to have one.
Well, I don't really remember.
I think we got to be fair with this.
Well, here's, here, this is how this came up. I had an irate business owner, because they were told.
We go through this sign thing every once in a while.
I, I know, and there was an issue with the sign, not in my ward. Then I had somebody come to me over the weekend, not in my ward, about the Sea Town Liquors up here, and all the signs in the windows. So my point is, how can you go after one business if you don't go after all of them, and the flags, and the illegal signs, and things like that?
I'm not defending Sea Town, but one's in the historic district, and one is not in the historic district.
The other one was not in the historic district, it was in your ward, Sam. But anyway, it just, if you're going to have a sign ordinance, don't attack one business and not another.
It's a tricky topic, because every business wants as many signs as they can possibly get, and then the problem, the problem on a town-wide scale is you get basically sign clutter that looks like crap, for lack of a better word.
Well, we have it.
If you've ever been to Las Vegas.
I know we do.
There is such a thing as oversigning.
So, I mean, I, I feel like, I was at that meeting, and it was, it was pretty scattershot, because basically everybody came and, and like, expressed their self-interest in what they wanted on their building, which of course is, I want more signage, so it would almost, I think, behoove us if we really want to take this on, and we think it's an important issue, to divide up the town by commercial districts.
That would be a good idea.
Like, because I agree with Marty, this is a different and more sensitive area for signage than Kent Plaza, because it's just, you know, there's thousands of cars going by there, so the, the signs need to be vehicular in scale, and this is more of a pedestrian historic area. So I hear what you're saying, but I think before we just open up a public meeting for people to come tell us how much more signage they want, is we need to be a little more strategic about what we're asking for.
Plus, I, I attended that, that hearing on signage before we all, Sam and you, joined the council. And the motivation was, a lot of it was about the electronic signage.
Yeah.
And that has still not been really addressed. So there are several issues to be dealt with. I was also approached by somebody, and this is a particular type of business, about the signage of, for alcohol on Washington Avenue in the vicinity of the college, and whether or not that, you know, is a contributing factor to heavy drinking by some students. So it seems to me, it's a very complex issue to be addressed in different ways in different parts of town, and that's going to be a tough, tough one.
It's the hardest ordinance we have to enforce. Like, you could have somebody working full-time in this office, doing nothing but write violations for signs, and then, of course, as soon as we do that, it gets posted on somebody's Facebook page, and we're like the anti-business community. And so it's just a lose-lose for us, in general, to enforce the ordinances that people should be voluntarily following, so it's, it is a very tricky topic, but, I mean, I think you should follow up with them and see, you know, what, what would that group like to do? Would they like to come make a formal presentation to us? I'd certainly be amenable to listening to what they have to say, but I just think we need to be strategic about what we really want to accomplish before just opening the floor to every business owner in every part of town, because each, each commercial area is a very unique animal.
I, I was in Gettysburg a couple of weeks ago. Gettysburg looks better now than it has in years, because they had just, they had, and they started taking all the signs down. It was beginning to look, you know, signs only work if you can differentiate them from another sign that's sitting right alongside them. And, and Gettysburg was beginning to look, like I said, like Las Vegas. I was there 25 years ago, and that's what impressed me, I thought, God, they must still want more neon here than they do anyplace, and this is supposed to be a colonial town. Well, they've gotten rid of that now, and the town is doing great, and it looks good. So, again, a... So, again, a lot, I can understand that individual businesses' point is that they, it's okay for me, but don't let somebody else do it. And that's what I got from when they came in to us the last time they were here. I think we need to have the sign ordinances, and historic district is a little bit different than, somebody said, well, you're living in the past. Yes, that's what we're trying to create, the past, what used to be in Chestertown.
Well, we could incorporate, too, the TAC program. I'd have to pull my paperwork out for that, because did we ever, we never got any directional signs for historic landmarks and things like that.
Now, we, we do have $2,500 in this budget for directional signage for the A&E district that I've actually had a preliminary meeting with Kay to talk about maybe hiring a small consulting firm to give us some direction on where directional signage might be appropriate, what it might look like, how many signs, what we want to identify. So, it is on directional signage, it's kind of a different project, but it is related, because I think this comes actually back to the waterfront task force, which I think renamed itself to the Chestertown Revitalization Task Force. One of their biggest suggestions was, we need to tell people where, where the waterfront is, or that we have a rail trail, where the shops are, where the studios are. So, I think that's important, but that's different than individual businesses.
Neon flashing signs.
It's a difference from individual businesses lobbying for more signage, or letting us know that their neighbor has illegal signs, and why aren't we writing them a ticket? So, why don't you follow up and report back, and, you know, let's move on to Liz.
The main concern I had, in addition to actually the same issue, because I was approached, was I raised with Bob Sykes, so that's fine, and done.
Well, I had one more thing on my agenda. Delmarva Power, though.
Yes?
Or we?
Would you like one?
No. Mine's only $44. So, with the solar panels and.
Yeah. We're trying to arrange a meeting with their billing department and the solar billers. I got an email last week from the public service person for Delmarva, and they said she had to check to see if they could meet with the solar industry. And I said, well, I wrote her back and said, I think that's just the whole problem. So, we're getting help on it. I'm sure that the bills are wrong for right now. And I'm pretty sure we're going to need a rebate from Delmarva Power. But it's, it's pretty complex. And when, when we switched over to solar, they changed every name on every bill and gave it a different account number, put them all under the Utilities Commission, and still bill us for things which I think we're now exempted from. But it's, it's going to take a mathematician to, and we're going to get to the bottom of it.
It's a mess.
It's, it's a monthly mess. They finally had called Bob Sykes and said, hey, we're going to shut off this account and that account, one of which happened to be a major pump station on 291, which would be backing up and getting us lawsuits everywhere. So, I paid the bill, but I made that last phone call and said, something's got to be done before we call the Public Service, Service Commission. Someone called, I want to make sure you hear that, Public Service Commission, so. Hopefully, they'll be a help if this doesn't get resolved. But the idea that they're not allowed to meet with the, the people that they're partners with, I mean, they hate them. That's the problem. They just hate them. They hate the sound of their name. But anyway, it's very important. It's, it's important to our budget, it's important to our last year's budget.
Okay, does anyone else have anything from their ward? Okay, there were no requests to be on the agenda, so are there questions or comments from the audience?
This might sound piddly, but in the scope of things, when we talk about economic impact in the town, whether it's the arts and entertainment, you know, what have you, you know, and obviously, we've heard different people talk about Washington College and the town working together. For years, for as far as I can remember, Washington College graduation has always been on Sundays. Last year, they started on Saturday. Just me personally at the restaurant, my sales were down 35% for the week. I mean, that's a huge economic impact of, basically, graduation happens on Saturday. Everyone is out of town and gone by Saturday night. And, you know, I think it may be the town, obviously, you can't tell the college to do something, but possibly, they could ask the college, hey, you know, it really helps the town as a whole if you do your, your whole graduation weekend, and you have commencement on Sunday.
Well, the college is sitting right there.
No, no, no. I just wanted to bring it up to the town.
My pleasure.
Sure, I just wanted to bring it up to the town as a whole, because I'm sure I'm not the only one in this town that feels the effects of that.
Huh.
You know, it's, I mean, it's huge, because there's all these things going on, whereas, you know, on Sundays, people, most of the people would make a day out. Well, now, on Saturday, you know, some people may have a party on Saturday night, but most are going out of town.
Is there a reason why you guys prefer Saturday? Travel plans or?
Well, it was never feasible to do it on Saturday when we did reunion and commencement on the same weekend. And I think it's been more than a year, we divorced the two events, which ended up creating two weekends in Chestertown from the college. We have the weekend of graduation, where our families of our seniors come back, and then we move reunion to another weekend altogether. And so, for a lot of local hotels and others, it's actually meant an increase in business, because it used to be, we didn't, there weren't enough rooms locally, and alumni and others were staying in our dorm rooms, so we were collecting up bed fees for that. That's why it got split, was when we, when we split reunion off to be at a standalone event, we didn't have the responsibility of moving back to Saturday for graduation, which a lot of families saw. They didn't interfere with Sunday afternoon. For traveling purposes, we needed to travel, do a Saturday, and get back home, go to work on Monday. So, that's, that's a generous one.
Sure, I'm not, no, I understand. I'm just, like I said, I know for a fact, well, I saw that here, and, you know, like I said, I'm sure that it, that there are many others in town that, you know, saw that same.
Okay. Yes.
I'm always so impressed when I see a town being transparent with the annexation, with our budgets, or anything. It stands in such contrast to the way Shore Regional Health handled, of course, continues to handle their program, shutting us out of the process and not letting us know what's going on. I really look forward to the day when we can be as transparent about the oil spill and how we're handling that as we are about the annexation and the budget. I still don't know what happened to that 85,000 gallons of oil that's missing and unaccounted. I still don't know why MDE failed to follow EPA guidance on this topic. I still don't know why for 28 years, there really was not a hearing. So, I'm just saying that I look forward to the time when we can be as transparent on that. I'm sure you have your reasons. We all know that doing things when we can't be transparent, it creates suspicion, and nothing helps. Note, that there's no such disinfectiveness somewhere, and I look forward to that day of transparency.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
It's all right.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are unanimously adjourned.